Our Washington City Youth Council Mayor, Tiara Cafferty here. She will offer our invocation and Councilman Jeff Turk if he will lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we thank thee that we are gathered here today with this city council and these remarkable leaders. Please guide these officers that they may use their hearts to make decisions upon the issues of this city. Thank thee for these counselors and the sacrifices they have made to their families to come here today and sustain our union. Please bless them with energy enthusiasm as our community continues to thrive. We also thank thee for the men and women that defend our great nation. May we ever be in debt to the sacrifices they have made. We thank thee for all that they've done so that they and we are not captive to thine enemies. Heavenly Father, we are undeniably grateful for our founding fathers and the freedom of liberty they advocated for us. We honor our great pioneer history and heritage and glorify in their vast sacrifices in crossing the plains. We thank thee for the youth of this generation. May thou bless them to prepare to be our future leaders so that they may lead and guide this great country. May they uphold the American people in turbulent times of the future. In closing, we call upon the powers of heaven to guide these leaders in our city's important matters. May there ever be heavenly angels that minister in this work of liberty. We love thee, dear Father, and we pronounce these blessings to be upon us in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Tiara. Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda for this evening. Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second?
Wardye.
Cliffye.
Rangerye.
Bellisne.
Turkai.
Thank you.
Item two announcements. I have one announcement and then I would like to turn some time over to our youth city mayor to have her share with you her experience she had at the state Capitol. Just a reminder, we have our cotton days the last week in April and then the Ironman breakfast on the 4th of May. So just want to make that public, the public knows and we'll announce that again, but we welcome all of you to come and enjoy our cotton day celebration. Okay, Tiara.
Okay, so that prayer that I gave was actually something I wrote for the state legislative meeting, right? So I had Travis Segmiller call me, I think, yeah, he called me. And he told me about how he wanted me to give the opening prayer, which he, the only pick, like to, he gets to pick a prayer and a pledge every like couple of years for that opportunity. So he actually had his dad, which was his birthday that day, give the pledge and I gave the prayer. And I gave that same prayer in class with Carmen, asked me to give it to you guys so that you could kind of get the experience that I got. And it was amazing. So we got there and Carmen and my mother came with me and we like got a private tour. We went in the back and we took a bunch of pictures and my grandparents came and they were so excited. And after I gave the prayer, we did the pledge and Travis actually, sorry, Representative Segmiller. We went on the floor and I got to sit with him and ask him questions and actually sit in the meeting itself. And he actually let me push the yes no button when he voted.
He didn't let me do that.
I'm like, can I push the button? He's like, go ahead.
I was gonna ask him that if you gave any input as to the vote, but not only that, you made the vote.
Yeah, I did. I'm like, this, I was not close to politics. So it was pretty exciting, yeah. It was really fun and like what the cool part was is that because the Washington City Youth Council is set up in the same procedure, kind of like what we do here, I understood a lot of it. And I even told Representative Segmiller, I'm like, I think she, this one lady stood up to talk and I was like, she's not allowed to direct the person, like because I'm a primatarian too and I teach that in Washington City Youth Council, I know how like that all works. And so when this lady said she was directing something to the Speaker of the House and yeah, and I told him, I'm like, I think she's doing that wrong. He's like, how did you know that? I'm like, huh? So it was such a great experience and they had a lot of fun. And if anything, I, Carmen really spilled a lot about her issues on politics. And so I got, it was a very educational experience. So that, it was really awesome.
Tiara, did you do two years or three years on the youth council?
Uh, this is my, yeah, my second year.
Second year.
Yeah, so it's been great.
Well, we're glad to have you. I'm glad you had that experience.
Yeah.
That's something that won't be forgotten soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cafferty.
Question, sorry. A question for you. So has it inspired you to go into public service?
Actually, yes, it has. When I sat there in the meeting, I was, I felt, so I felt comfortable because I knew what was going on and also because of my history classes I've been taking, which I'm so grateful for. I've been learning a lot about government and I sat there and I realized, I'm like, wow, like you make, I told Travis, I'm like, you make a big difference. Like every vote you give, it just stunned me how, how important it was to him. And he just loved, like he took it to heart, everything that he did in the legislative meeting. And so I realized, I'm like, wow, like I'm sitting here, like could I do this someday? And I definitely am taking into consideration of going into political science or anything like that because being there definitely taught me that every voice matters. And I didn't really believe that, you know, and now I definitely do. So it has changed my perspective on politics.
Well, that's great. And I only ask that question because we do worry that our young people are not wanting to engage in the public service side, so.
Yeah, definitely, I'm more engaged in it now, so.
Tiara's been.
Want to talk about political science and public administration and what school to go to? I can talk to you about that.
Tiara's been fun. She, she's graduating this year, but she was a freshman in my youth council and we had things at Piney Middle School. So she's been doing this for a long time and she does a great job at it. So thanks for continuing your service. Do good jobs.
Any more questions?
Thank you, Tiara. Okay, anything to declare or abstain from on this meeting from the council? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes for the city council meetings, 3/26/19 and 3/27/19. The board audit report to approve the board audit report for March 2019. And three special events, consideration to approve a special event for the ward. Easter breakfast and egg hunt, April 13th, Highland Park, African Coral Canyon First Ward. Consideration to approve a special event for picnic in the park to be held at May 3rd at Highland Park, African Green Spring Ward. And item three, consideration to approve a special event for the Washington First Ward Party to be held May 4th at Nissen Park in African Washington First Ward. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I'll go ahead and make most of the we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second?
Turkai.
Bellisne.
Rangerye.
Cliffye.
Wardye.
Thank you, those are all approved. Item five, Utah Food Bank. To, I made a consider request by the Utah Food Bank to support a mobile food pantry to be located in the parking lot of the old Nissen Mercantile store to be held the last Thursday of each month from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. African, Linda Trujillo, area director.
While Ms. Trujillo's coming up, I just want to take a moment. I had the opportunity to go tour her facility down at Fort Pierce and they run quite the operation. It's, there's, it was impressive when you could go in and see the amount of food stores that you guys have available and processed through there, so.
Thank you. Well, first I'd like to thank all of you for giving us the opportunity at the Utah Food Bank to be able to, to request that we partnership with Washington City. We were asking for a mobile food pantry distribution site in order to bring product to the residents of Washington County. We have a program called a mobile food pantry. Now, we like to use this program where there may not be a typical brick and mortar facility available to distribute food. So we will bring our truck out, we'll bring product out, we'll set it up on tables, and then we do a distribution to the individuals that come. There is not a qualifying piece to this other than they do need to self-declare. Most of the product is government food and we try and supplement it with any other types of fresh fruits and vegetables. Many times people don't have the ability to go into St. George or the transportation to be able to, to receive any type of a food box. And this is not a huge food box, this is something supplemental that can help people decide or come in, get the food and then help them a little bit throughout the month. There are many people in residence here and I've kind of, I don't know if you all have one of these.
I passed it on.
Okay, great. And there's a few statistics in there and we just don't know who it is that's in need of food. Food insecurity is a huge thing that's going on these days. People don't know whether or not they should pay their bills, go to the doctor, do any of these items or purchase food. Food always goes to the end, to the last on the item because it's easy to buy ramen and some of the other items that are not particularly, you know, good for the kids. We also have had these mobiles working in some of the elementary schools. We have one at Washington Elementary that we've been doing for the last three or four years. We just don't know who these children are, who these people are that need the help. We'd like to offer this help to the residents of Washington City.
So this is, this will be the second location in Washington. And we've set it up to be in the parking lot of the Nissen, Old Nissen store.
And this is for the community.
Right.
When we go to Washington Elementary, it's strictly for the children of Washington Elementary.
So you just distribute to the children up there? Because I've been up there a few times and that didn't seem to be the case because there was the, adults were the ones picking up.
The parents can come in, yes.
Okay.
If anyone that's associated with Washington Elementary.
Yeah, it was out of the parking lot, it wasn't the school children, it was the parking lot with all the parents coming in, so.
The parents come in and they help the children because sometimes it's too much for the kids to carry. And there are some parents that pick up them.
So that site will continue to operate? The only other question is, is obviously this is a private parking lot that you're asking to use. Have you got permission from them or is that?
Yeah, Barry Blake helped us get permission from the church to be able to use that facility. So they're on board. We wanted a permanent sign, but they didn't allow that. So we'll be able to put temporary signs up if you have some to let people know where it's gonna be and you know, and when it's coming up. But yeah, Barry helped us with that.
You're a part of this project?
I help.
Okay. You start saying us and we, it's like, oh, okay.
Linda does all the work.
Okay.
My staff.
Yeah. And Linda, you, when we were talking before, you, you said this is self-declared. Some of the other programs, you have to go in and have financial declarations and whatnot, which actually pushes people away from the programs.
Exactly, because then they don't want to give that information. They might be right on the edge of that so that they don't qualify for services. So this is a self-declaration and the self-declaration is set up through USDA, all the criteria.
If this is on private property, then what is the support from the city that you need?
Well, we have to approve it because it's, it comes, it's kind of like approving special requests and special events.
Even place, fire?
I'm sorry.
Like police, just officers around or fire department or anything?
We've never had a problem with them. We do them throughout the state.
Just volunteers from time to time there if you want to come help.
Absolutely.
So we would look this council, we kind of like, and one, we think there's a couple of purposes here. One, an endorsement by the city council, this is a good cause. But kind of like when we have these, and I don't know what the term is, Drew, when we have the kind of groups come in occasionally in parking lots and that. It's similar to that, so your approval, the city will be like, that approval is based on a permanent basis. And this was every Thursday? What was the schedule?
Once a month, the last Thursday of the month.
Last Thursday.
Between 11:00 and 1:00, we thought we would capture a lot of people that are on the lunch hour that time.
Well, Mayor Emery, make a motion if you hear one. I'd like to make a motion that we approve a request by the Utah Food Bank to support a mobile food pantry to be located in the parking lot of the old Nissen Mercantile store to be held the last Thursday of each month from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Second, the motion and then just ask the question that if that property were to sell or whatever, this would need, I guess, to be reviewed and renewed, that there might be conditions that could change depending on what they're. I have a motion and a second.
Turkai. Bellisne and I, and I want to say thank you for coming into Washington City for a second location.
We've wanted to do this for such a long time, thank you so much.
Rangerye.
Cliffye, and thank you also for being here.
Wardye.
Thank you, Linda. I'm gonna come help you one Thursday. Item six, preliminary plat, consideration to approve the preliminary plat for Heritage Place, excuse me, located on the northwest corner of 2000 South and Washington Fields Road, African, National Fields LLC, Sean Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, the applicant is requesting approval of the preliminary plat for the Heritage Place subdivision. The applicant is proposing 179 lots and the area of coverage is 44.352 acres. The zoning designation at this location is the planned unit development residential, which is the PUDR, and the planned unit development commercial, PUDC. The surrounding zoning is R110 to the north, RA half, R112 to the east, with R110 and R18 to the west and then followed up by AG 20 and R112 to the south. This preliminary plat approval request is in follow-up to the recently approved zoning of the PUDR and PUDC zoning. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this particular location. Staff reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Planning Commission reviewed the request through a public hearing on March 20th, 2019. At their meeting, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the preliminary plat for Heritage Place subdivision on view to city council and that came with, of course, findings and conditions and the first 11 are our standard ones. So I'd just like to basically address number 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16. Number 12, that all development will be in accordance with the approved PUD as the regulations were set in for this site and this project. The commercial portion of development, which is on the corner of Washington Fields Road and 2000 South there, will of course have to come through with a, a project to you at a future date. That was, one of the options they took was to postpone that and bring that to you and they'll have to go through all the public hearing processes as it relates to that. Number 14, and the pool amenity area will be required to be completed at the time or prior to one-third of the single family and the patio homes are constructed and they receive their certificates of occupancy. Number 15, the park amenity area within the townhome portion of development will be required to be completed at the time or prior to one-third again of the townhomes and constructed and to receive their certificate of occupancy. Now, we're referring to basically those areas are the pool area, of course, here, and then this particular area amongst the townhomes across the street to the east there. That's what those two basically reflecting, as you remember in their PUD, they put in is those particular amenity areas. Following up number 16, the current label Phase 11, which is the Nissen Hill, the planning commission put on there, needs to be relabeled as an open space hillside and that the hillside area will be dedicated to the HOA or it to be conveyed to a long-term property owner. This needs to take place at or before one-third of the build-out of the overall development project.
What would a long-term property owner be?
Well, that could be maybe us if they, I've heard they may want to consider, consider to you, but I'll let the applicant address that. But that, that would be an example, would be it being given to the city and the city accepts it. Or the HOA, you know, it's either gonna come to us when it comes to this. We just didn't want to put Washington City because there could be another person who stands up and say, hey, I'd love to take that and I'll pay tax to make sure it's maintained. Chances are very small, but that's just an example. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that the council might have as it relates to Heritage Place preliminary plat.
My only one on here is, and this is, I'm trying to find on my notes, but the units 103 to 106, wasn't there going to be a road that connected over to the side from there? There at the edge, right off of Main Road there. Am I making that up? I'm trying to remember what was there. Where are?
103 to 106.
That's in the townhome area?
Well, you've got a, you've got a road that comes in, it didn't connect into this, it services those houses.
Yeah.
It doesn't go into this project.
I'm mixing it up, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, it didn't tie on into this.
Okay, I apologize, I was just clarifying, I just.
We probably wouldn't want one there for the sake of those five houses because I think a lot of people would shimmy through there and it might cause a problem there, so.
I apologize, I just was kind of rusty on this project.
Now, there was some discussion about easement on the north side for an outlet. Uh, up into Heritage Fields, but not this direction.
Okay, all right, thank you. I see that they've added the trail, the council was adamant about, appreciate that.
Yeah, I looked for that too.
I'm sure all of you looked for those things, as you remember.
I was going off the list of the things that I have from the last one. I do appreciate how this has changed up a lot. I like amenities and the open space, it feels more of a residential area. Appreciate the process on this, this has come a long ways.
So unless you have any other questions, I'll invite Adam up to answer your particular specific question for that. Adam Allen, Bush and Gudgel.
I'm sorry, the question was about the hillside.
It just said that it would be conveyed to a long-term property owner. In my mind, it's like, who would that be except for the HOA? But if it comes to the city as open space, then.
Yeah, either the city is open space or HOA. We weren't, you know, they wanted to have maybe some discussion with you guys maybe of whether or not you guys would want to just go to the HOA. So at the time, I just said I wasn't exactly sure, so that's why I avoided that way. It's a long-term property. Just in case. So if it's anything I'm emotional about, it would be late. Okay. I do have one thing that I wanted to talk about, which is the conditions from planning commission. I was at planning commission meeting, I was not at the initial city council meeting where you guys discussed a lot of the things that went in and out, that was Bob Robinson. And I could not remember, but it is the understanding of the applicant that the, um, the park would be installed when 50% of the townhomes were completed and that the pool would be installed when 50% of the overall community is completed from their discussions with you and what they had in their book that they put together. So that was kind of what I called it.
I don't think we had that discussion, to be honest with you.
I don't think we discussed at what trigger point for aggression this would be.
But to be honest with you, I like that 30% trigger point because those amenities become important. You've got enough people now, those amenities are important. That's why when I start that 30%, I like that. Because you let half of them get, well, obviously you got half the people that have amenities. So 30% to me is a pretty large trigger point. So we'll take out the amenities, go ahead and service the people over here, whether, yeah, you got, they're flawed out there.
I do appreciate the accommodation for the people to get off and accelerate and to decelerate off of Washington Fields Road, that will help out a lot. Um, I do have a question for staff. The part where it has Road A off of Heritage Fields Drive, is there, once this builds out, would this meet a four-way stop at that point later on? It's on the east side of the, sorry, west side of the property.
A two-way stop right there.
Is it, yeah, not a four-way?
I don't, I don't think you have enough vehicles.
Yeah.
You're gonna have Heritage, Heritage Road, which is a little area.
Yeah. East and west?
It's, it'd be pretty much like any signal, it'd have to make certain wards before we're four-way stopping.
Right, because of all that I've talked of existing homeowners that are on that road, they discussed that due to the development on the other side of the hill, that is getting a lot of, a lot of traffic.
Yeah, and so for the four-way stop, it would be, so it would have to be met for accidents, pedestrians, just like this signal of level.
Yeah, turn motion.
Speeds, so.
That was the only other one that I was just concerned about, I'm wondering why would trigger that? So we just have to have enough vehicles and development there, right?
And it, it did come after everything's built. We can't anticipate that it would be the one.
Back to the 30 to 50%. Now, I suppose another way to do that also is to say, within a year of the time that somebody's moved in or something, in other words, if you sell them property with those amenities, how long do they have to wait before they get them? You're probably in a better position to say 30% than for us to set a one-year timeline.
Yeah, and that, I was just talking through that with him. And I guess the question we just asked, that can it be, so 33% of the townhomes are completed is when, is when the playground goes in and 33% of the overall development for the pool? Is in their mind the pool is the overall development for the pool, not just the patio and garden? Or patio and regular home?
Is that on the intention that you're basically starting with the townhomes as your primary investment as you're starting? Because it, are you doing everything at the same time or is this in sections? That's what would help me better understand what to say.
Sean Sullivan, owner developer. So just in response to that question, we don't know exactly where, our plan right now is to start with Phase 1, possibly multiple phases, maybe one or two together. We don't know if we're gonna push up through and do three and four next. This is something we're still going through on sewer. We're doing our construction right now to find out all the details on where we'd actually go through. So that's one thing that may help to protect the residents is if we do start with, let's say we build everything but the townhomes, that pool doesn't get built, will the amenities get built until, until that product gets built? Maybe then overall, 33% of the entire project be protected, protected. We're not trying to get out of it sooner than later. It's just more of a factor of have people there to use it. And then on the hillside, we would like to ask for 50% before we donate it, if we do donate the Area 11 to the city, that we do that at 50%. There's some tax reasons why we'd like to push that further down if that's a, that's.
So when I'm looking at this, is when you're saying 33%, by pushing your density of homes, your highest density is in nine, four, and seven. At what point would you anticipate 30% if you're putting those off till your later development? I mean, it looks like by size, you're looking at, you know, areas one, two, and five. But if you're going by overall homes, I mean, that's a significant amount of homes before you hit 33%.
Sure, so in the townhome area, I think it would be a good idea to do that percentage based on the townhomes where that amenity is inside the townhomes. That way it gets built with those. The pool is just more of, how is it worded there?
The challenge I see on the, on the park area in the townhomes is construction. Right. Construction access here. You're trying to have a landscaped park area in the middle of, from mid-cycle construction. It all kind of needs to be done on the tail end of the construction, at least of that part.
Yeah, most of that construction will happen and then those, those flats that are there, I don't see it really, I mean, other than just that small bit of space between the house and the park. I don't, you're certainly not gonna access that from there because you're gonna build off the roadways. You're gonna access off the roadways to building places.
Hardest also with the percentage or is the HOA fees, you know, 30, 30% would be the 59 units. 59 units to absorb the pool area, that's why we.
Yeah, and I wouldn't have a problem with the pool very personally because I think that is a larger amenity and a little different amenity. I could, the only problem you get into is, you know, 30% for this and 50% for that. All of a sudden, it's like, okay, who's keeping track of what trigger points are?
Yeah, I think we need to have, we would love to be 50% of, maybe the pool is the overall project. That way if we do one or another, it doesn't affect it, just 50% when you start the pool.
But I could be supportive of that, I just don't, it's so fragmented, the concern I'd have. Saying, okay, yeah, you hit the trigger point for this and oh, just a minute, we didn't realize the trigger point for that.
I would be surprised that you don't want that pool to go in as a sales factor.
We would, a lot of it comes down to the HOA, the HOA is gonna be paying for the pool. So have enough people to keep the HOAs lower. But yes, you're correct, I mean, we, we may end up putting the pool in sooner just if we would have probably as a developer, probably expensively just to help with sales. But we'd love the option to do a 50% just so if we have a slowdown or hiccup that we're, we don't have a $4,000 amenity there that only 30 people are, are having to pay for.
Well, after hearing that discussion, maybe it's just better to set something simpler on the council's expectation.
Well, I guess I do like the 30% in the townhomes because I think that isn't important many, that it is just for those townhomes.
Correct.
Well, I don't have a problem with the hillside, I don't have a problem. Well, I don't have a problem with the hillside, I don't have a problem. I, I do have just one thought, and I, I, we've talked about, uh, decel lanes and whatnot. Uh, as I've driven that road, as you go down, back to the subdivision you used to live in, have you noticed a small decel lane that goes into the subdivision, what a difference that makes?
Yeah.
And that's why I thought, just for, for the safety and the, of your own subdivision, I would encourage, I, I was a city, we can't say you have to.
Well, that's right.
But if, if you would look at that, because I can't see it really affecting what you're doing, it's, it's very small, you probably want two cars, three cars on a decel.
On where are you talking?
It's down, the one I'm thinking about is down in, uh.
Summerfield?
Summerfield.
So we should have decel lanes, that was one thing.
On two thousand, I don't think.
Sitting on San. On two thousand, what they do on Washington.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm just, I'm talking about on two thousand right there. Because if you go down to where Heritage, uh, to, uh, Summerfield, like I said, it's a very small decel area, but it sure makes a difference. People travel that road, because people are getting into that subdivision, can then move over, traffic continues to flow to where, especially with this one, with the motions you've got there, just, that may help your subdivision to flow.
Yeah, well, so, so how would that work, um, because that's right up against the corner, you're not talking about that?
Talking about this one.
Yeah, you've got the whole commercial parcel that's, that's there, like I said, it's.
You'd be a, you'd be a decel for, for traffic going.
Southbound traffic, and then axel as you came out.
No, when southbound traffic, southbound traffic, you'd be out on, out on Washington Fields Road, right?
No, well, you'd have it coming out of two thousand. And then, like I said.
Are you talking about a decel lane or an acceleration lane?
Both, you'd have both.
Okay, and it was the.
If you look at Summerfield, you see it's very small, it isn't, I can't see the expense being that great there, and it really is a good amenity for the subdivision.
We've talked about this.
On two thousand.
On two thousand, on the.
Uh, well, I'm talking the one up off the commercial quarter, right?
Okay, I thought you were talking further down.
Mid, mid, mid.
Because that to me is going to be the bulk, that's where all your townhomes are, the bulk of the traffic, in my opinion, is going to try and get out of that one.
Okay.
Well, like I said, just, you may just look at it.
Yeah.
But then for your own amenities, I think that it's, as I've driven that circle, it's like, man, that makes it, those people have got to appreciate the fact that they don't have to worry about somebody collecting behind them as they're getting ready to turn into their subdivision.
Yeah, we wanted to definitely make sure we do a good job of.
But I, I can't see the expense being, I don't see you're going to lose anything out of it, and the expense to help create it there, and maybe you would sit with some striking, maybe you can help out a little bit, just in the design, you may look at that.
Yes, striking, that's what we were talking about last time.
Correct, I was going to say, that's the new design, you may just kind of consult with them, to me, I think it'd be a good.
I think in terms of percentages, you suggested thirty-three percent instead of thirty, I think. I, you know, I would like to see a lot of your people with that amenities, that are in, in vital's homes, so you may have to subsidize it for a while, but I, I, I don't see it being unreasonable for us to go to a third, which is thirty-three percent. And then maybe forty percent on the hill, because that affects a lot fewer people directly.
Yeah, the hill to me is, like I said, it's, you know, tax purposes or something that affects them, I don't see it really, really a trigger point to the hill, but it's not crucial to us, other than they're getting fragments.
Not be fine with moving the pool, like Jeff said, that we don't want to, because it is an expensive hill.
What the, counting on the HOA to be the investors into, and I can see that it's, I also can see the value of having it for selling and attracting people.
Well, sometimes, that's like saying.
But that being said, I appreciate the logic and the thinking behind it. Things are going great.
No, thank you for.
Are you worried if that goes, if you have it in and the HOA is paying for that, are you worried that there might be a downside if, if you can't get that? If those residents are still, you have a small group of residents who are paying the upkeep for that pool, and it would be upkeep, who we're talking about. It would be, yeah, and that's where we're at, so we may put it much there in the fifty percent, things are going great, not, no, no economic slowdowns, there's a good chance we put it before that. We just like the option if we do even push it to fifty percent. That way we're not burdening, overburdening us or the HOA.
He was going to say, you are the HOA.
Exactly.
Until the last person goes in, you're it, right?
And from the beginning, they're not necessarily the people in the HOA who are paying for it.
Oh, yes, they are.
Yes, they are, until the last. From the beginning, we really want to keep the HOA down. Well, doesn't, doesn't the, doesn't the organization have to pay their dues and fund that?
They are the majority of every one of those lots, they don't look for it until it's sold.
Yeah, I told you, I remember that one. They're on the hook for it, but it would, it would be. Their, I think their point is, though, that the fees that they're collecting from the owners are the ones that should go in to pay for that.
Correct.
I, I understand. Yeah, that's exactly right, so we, from the very, the very beginning, we wanted this to be livable, a very livable project with the amenities we're offering, but we also want to be affordable, you know, with the HOA.
So your overall request is, look, we want a, a specific time, but if things are better, of course, we'll put it in sooner.
Absolutely.
But we need at least have this buffer in case, there are a lot of things that happen in your industry.
This is a big project, and there could be slowdowns coming, that we have to do.
Does, does he have to knock on wood when he says that? I did it just.
I have to, because it's my business.
I don't think it's going to go slow for you.
I hope not.
Well, I think with most things, and, and with the quality of the home you build, I would agree with that, most things, if it's a quality thing out there, most builds have been, well, less quality runs a little slower, but quality stuff, but. I think if any of the townhomes are going to be fully equipped, or, just because I think it's been longer than this, I think they're going to be. Mayor, you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
You are, I'll make the motion that we approve the preliminary plat for Heritage Place, uh, located in south, northwest corner of two thousand South Washington Fields Road. With the, uh, uh. What am I looking for?
Conditions.
Conditions, conditions is noted, uh, that being that at thirty percent, the townhome amenities would trigger, at fifty percent of the pool, the hillside would trigger, or completion bills.
Is it appropriate to ask the consideration of? I just before, or do I, okay, I apologize.
Oh, you go ahead.
Oh, just, you had brought up the concept of requesting them to consider deceleration.
Oh, I, I think they heard me, I mean, we can't, we can't force that as a motion, but I think.
Second.
Oh, yeah, I, I.
Did you second or did you?
I seconded.
I did.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second.
Ordinate. Cloughye.
Ranger, aye.
Bellis, aye. Turric, aye.
Aye.
That passes four to one. Move on to item seven, ordinance, consideration to approve an ordinance adopting small cell infrastructure design standards.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm not planning on doing the presentation again, if you want.
There, there was a part of that that I missed yesterday, and I can't remember what it was, we just, we could just start over.
If you want.
I think Rick gave me sleep last night, if you're.
Did you give, you, I, I did send that out. Uh, but the ordinance adopts the, uh, small cell infrastructure design standards, uh, that we presented last night, and again, that's an initial step. Uh, I don't think we need to view it as set in stone, as different things change, we'll update that, bring it back before you. So, do you have any questions or concerns?
I think it's a good policy, we're, we're hoping that, we're hoping that bigger cities get to deal with some of this stuff first, and we'll just pay attention and try and gain some wisdom from hopefully mistakes they make, that's the, hopefully that's the position we're in.
Right, and, and again, this is driven by, uh, FCC ruling, and we have to, in order to have some say in what goes on, we need to have something in place by next week or.
Well, there's some, there's some legisla, well, not legislation, there's some lawyers that are getting involved in some lawsuits that we, it'll be interesting to see how they play out.
Yeah, APPA is, is, is filed, uh.
Right.
Right at the court. Uh, appeal on it, uh, it'll, I have no idea how long that'll take, but in the meantime, they're still under this, uh, first order, or FCC order, not first.
Well, this looks like a good first step, and I'm, I'm glad, glad for our city's involvement. I mean, from the UAM side, getting together with your, with your people there, spearheading this.
I think it's been good, and, and, uh, again, I, I think you're correct that the larger, I mean, you look at the cell providers, they're going to focus where the most people are at first, just by nature. Uh, I, I don't think Washington's going to be a hot spot for five G initially, uh, but you never know.
Well, there, there are some devices out there that are still three G, so that three G cut out is, well, it's, it's usually not cell phones anymore, although you may have one, but there's, but there's some devices out there, uh. Little towers and things that, that use three G, and, and when they phase that out, they're going to have trouble updating all that equipment.
Okay, you ready?
I'm ready, are you ready?
Yep, move approval of, uh, ordinance adopting small cell infrastructure design standards.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Ward, aye.
Ranger, aye.
Bellis, aye. Turric, aye.
All right, that passes four to one.
Thank you.
Item eight, Department of Air, of Water Quality, consideration to approve the municipal wastewater planning program and a report for the state of Utah. Water Quality Board, Public Works Director, Mike Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the report, council gets to see annually, they only change this year, but they change, we're not doing a resolution like normal, and they've actually stepped up to what we do this electronically now, instead of typing in our answers on a report, so. Pretty much the same questions it has been for the last five years that I've been doing this. The report is for us to do a self-analysis of our system, as well as the state, to take any of the issues we could have had through the year, look at those issues compiled over other communities in the state, and it's needed in case we want to go for a loan with the divisional water quality. The only issue we had in this report this year is we did have backups into homes, but that was from a flooding event and a contractor. So that was our only issue we had, that was that out in Washington Fields, and actually two separate developments.
So we just have to report those as part of the report?
Yeah, you have to report any type of over.
That's what I was going to say.
Mayor, if there's no discussion, I'll make the motion that we approve our wastewater planning program annual report in the state of Utah.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second?
Turric, aye.
Bellis, aye.
Ranger, aye.
Cloughye. I'm going to say aye, but I, I feel like we're, we're cheating him out of talking about this more.
I don't, I don't like wastewater as much as I like slurry cells.
Give that man a chance.
Thank you.
Is it the difference in smell, what is it?
Item nine, project, consideration to approve the Main Street Drainage, Drainage Project Cross Section, Mike Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor, um, we went over this last night in our work session, so if you have any questions, if you'd like to bring up a project.
Do you see any problem with tabling this for two weeks in terms of your startup and your timeframe?
Hmm, no. I always, I always like as much time as I can, but two weeks is not going to be a crucial, crucial holdup for us, so. If the council would like two more weeks, we could definitely do two more weeks.
I would appreciate it from my point of view, there's been some significant changes in my life, and I did not get a chance to really finalize my dis with residents there. I would, I would motion at least two more weeks to kind of talk some things out if that's possible.
If there's no, if there's no comments on that, Mayor, I'll make a, a motion that we table this for two weeks to our next city council meeting, do I need to put a date on that? Because I don't know, what is it? April twenty-fourth, to April twenty-fourth, uh, that is, uh, item number nine, consideration to approve the Main Street Drainage Project Cross Sections, uh. Do my motion.
Second.
Can I have a motion and a second?
Ward, aye. Cloughye.
Ranger, aye.
Bellis and nay, but, and I just want to get it on the record, if we, if we really think, or we know that there's a stormwater issue, that we need to get the clock started to get the designs going, to get that fixed. I, I don't, unless we think that there's a real material change to what we have before us, I think the table is, uh, not the right way to go, so. Bellis and nay.
Turric, aye.
Okay, that's approved, four to one. All right, we'll move on to report of officers from assigned committee, anything to report? See you.
Mayor, I might report, uh, trying to remember who came out of our shade, we met as a shade tree committee, but we had a good lunch and.
We did. It's, it's hard to report about that sandwich.
Yeah, there, I mean, a lot of it was basically just kind of where we were to and talking about some different trees. It's kind of an interesting group, because they had found a new tree in town that Judge Bunnell actually had found, and they, and they ended up getting samples, and they went to like four different biologists, and they come back and have a kind of piece of the tree out to send in for this molecular structure, and. They really don't know what it is, other than it's some type of a bay tree, that they think might be a bay elm tree, or anyway, it's kind of, so that was a lot of our discussion. It's right up on the corner of Main Street, oh, it could be an endangered tree, it may affect our Main Street.
It is not endangered, I can verify that right now.
You should have brought that up.
At best, it's invasive.
Can we, can we go back and talk about that slurry?
Hey, I, I got fun.
Anyway, no, that's, that, I'll report that one, the second one is, is.
Can I, can I tag on to that before you jump subjects? I'll just, I'll pass on the safety advice that we got from there, if you're ever cutting a limb, it is off of a tree, they, they, they really highly suggest you not do that from a ladder. That was, and they have some very interesting things they have to deal with, and the tree trimming and safety, so I thought that was, that was good, and, and, uh.
Yeah, we did talk about.
Something I, I will remember.
They want you to climb the tree rather than work off a ladder.
Climb it or use a lift.
That's preferable. Or use like a truck.
That's, trees, then you're, you're above your cut, and if it falls and swings, it doesn't take you out, there are lots of reasons for that, so. That was good safety advice, anybody who attended this meeting can walk away with a little more safety advice there.
Hold on to the tree and cut.
The other report, Mayor, given it isn't actually a committee, but I actually had the opportunity to, to took the opportunity to go up and look at the new scale project up at, uh, Oregon last week.
Oh, really?
Uh, was there.
I forgot that was coming up, that's great.
Yeah, it was great, it was a great experience, very, very interesting to see, testing the, to me, it's a great project, it's a don't pray in project.
It's, it's really exciting stuff when you start getting into the details of what they're proposing and the history of where it came from.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, uh, UAM sounds like that they're futuristically going to have those opportunities, I would encourage other council members when they pop up to jump in.
City Manager.
Oh, uh, one that, I apologize.
Sorry, I was trying to pull up a text, there's just some concerns of, we have our, uh, cod days coming up. And I was already to say this. Oh my, just know that we'll be having that coming up, we also have the Ironman breakfast coming up in May.
Councilman, just to follow up, you weren't here last night, but we had a report from the city, asked, they gave us the.
Good, okay, I apologize.
The council members that wanted to be involved there.
I got some texts today from people just making sure that that would be brought up, they, remember, these are coming up, I apologize for not being particular, so it looks like it's right in their cup, it's not even happening.
Just a sideline on that, I won't be there Saturday the fourth, so I'm counting on two, four, five of you to crank out your spatulas.
Sounds like it's a council breakfast.
It's going to be council breakfast this year, but if you could, I, I.
Can I be mayor?
You can be mayor pro temp. You can wear my apron, but if you, if you could.
It's all about the spatula that makes it.
And Mike Shaw promises that that grill will be a new, brand-new grill and they'll rebuild it.
Oh, really? Whoa, what? That, that'll take all the challenge out of keeping them black and going.
So, thank you, okay, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple of projects that, uh, it's been, appreciate the council last night, spent a lot of, uh, time working on a number of projects last night. Um, uh, you did get a report on the irrigation, I was just going to mention with regard to the irrigation, there's some kind of good things going on in the background with that. Our water attorney for years has been Rick Haven, uh, I'm trying to get, we'll get a time when Rick Haven can come to the council, a work session to talk about, he, he, he knows this stuff very well, particularly in Washington City, because he's been involved with this for decades. Um, our chairs, how it all works with our neighboring cities and things, I think that's just good education for the council, but he's involved in this process as well, to just do that irrigation study. Um, I know we've moved around a little bit on some dates, a little bit.
So, so sorry, what happened with that, we got a, we got an update on that just the other day, just kind of a status.
Yeah, I just was mentioning that we're going to try to get Rick here one day, just, just again, part of the ongoing education for the council on that.
I would, I would very much enjoy that.
Well, I think that it, it's, it's, it's complicated enough, that even for those others who kind of know it, it's good refresher for us too, and then, you know, we have a number of. Well, I think that it, it's, it's, it's complicated enough that even for those others who kind of know it, it's good refresher for us, too, and then, you know, we have a number of ditches, you can walk through ditches, you can walk through the shares, how that all functions, how the, the, the non-use, have the permits work, and how the city does all that, and again, also our relationship with St. George, Mill Creek, and all that. So, we'll, we'll, we'll try to, that's all I was trying to point out on that, cause you did receive a report just recently, uh, we've moved around a little bit on Merrill, um, it looks like we're gonna try to be at about mid-April on Merrill Road, so that come up a little bit, you know, that's, it's like the ticker tape, I was giving you the current on that. Uh, just a reminder, and I'll just bring this up just so the public group is aware too, we're gonna have the road maintenance project again, and again, as was pointed out last night, we now have a new project page on our website, you can link it to the bottom of the main page, and that will, uh, if public has an interest. They do a great job of notifying the neighborhoods, so, cause of course they have to have cars moved and other things, but if anybody's interested, they can see the actual road maintenance schedule and locations, the locations, uh, through that project, uh, page on our website. The Green Springs Fiber, uh, project, uh, cable's been ordered, we're hoping to do that about mid-April, just to get a reach on that, cause you've seen some work up there, uh, there's final splicing going on on two of our substations, uh, we've set about fifteen of nineteen poles along the turf farm, uh, and so that's moving along pretty well, uh, there. Uh, one of our big, and probably one of our last capital projects under the current capital facilities plan is the state substation, the oldest of our substations here on three hundred, um, and that will, uh, that station's had nothing overly substantial done in a long time, and so, that's been on our schedule for some time. The layout's been approved on that, we're working on some other things as part of that, I'm just sharing this with you, as part of that will, will, uh, improve, improve some of the aesthetics of that, the change in fence will come down a little bit. Block or panel, uh, around that substation, we'll appreciate that a little bit.
So, on that one, are you considering expanding its footprint or keeping it within the footprint that's there?
The footprint will stay the same, there'll just be some, some additions and some improvements, and transformer change outs and things like that, matter of fact, we came across actually even an encroachment, which is not uncommon. Uh, we have a private property encroachment, we don't actually even think we need to violate, we, we don't need to remedy the encroachment, meaning we don't need to force it off. But we do wanna clean it up, so, uh, Mr. Hanson's been in touch with the property owner, will be in touch with the property owner, to indicate that the encroachment does exist, very common sometimes downtown, especially the old part of town, we have some overlaps. Um, again, we don't even feel that there's gonna be an expansion, we would need to have that encroachment cleaned up for us to use.
Okay.
So we'll probably just allow that land to be continued to use, but we wanna clean the line, we don't wanna have an encroachment, so, that's the discussion we're gonna have, and then just final, mayor, I would just, uh, uh, we've been pleased kind of with how the weather's been as far as snowpack, um, we don't know what we're gonna get this next day or two up in the mountains, we've got the big additional snow. I only bring this up because the river is still, I mean, the river is still flowing well, and as a matter of fact, we, uh, we, we do want to caution people in the river, we had an incident the other night where just people were floating down the river, uh, they're too, they're too copped, and, uh, basically, um. They got stuck in the middle of the river, knee down, for four hours, we could not hold a bottom portion of the leg out, because.
Down in the.
Essentially, it's like a quicksand.
Yeah, yeah, well, it is, it literally is a quicksand.
Yeah, so it took, we didn't get to call, the, the, the adults that were with this, worked for two hours, trying to get out, and I'm talking about a foot and a half, two feet of leg, Arches and Cruz worked for two hours, uh, holding, holding. And so it is still dangerous, and, and it does have a tendency to just kind of hole this way, um, and so we just caution our citizens to be very careful around the river, and it is running high at spring, so we're running higher than, than normal times of the year, and so, especially those sandbars, this was out by the sandbar, near where we did kind of the, the trail work. And of course, we can't do much with those sandbars, we can't get in and move those or any things, and so, it was just an innocent, um, innocent issue that occurred, but was problematic for a while.
This was an adult type person?
This was an adult, and it was just, it was the oddest thing, I mean, you would've thought, why is this a problem for us?
No, they, they had a, your newspaper had a, an article about a, somebody in the park, that they had to fly a helicopter to get him out, and they stayed overnight, it was, it was life threatening.
Quicksand up there.
Yeah, yeah.
So particularly for parents to be very, very watchful of their children, cause again, this was of both size adults, and lots of adults trying to help him out, still, it's a problem, you know? Anyway, I think, mayor, other, you know, other, any other.
Let's make sure on that, Rick, on that substation, you keep that little Utah rock out front. Thank you. Anything else? Not all entertaining, motion.